All right then, if we're all here, let's call the meeting to order. It is six thirty-seven roughly. And we'll start with a pledge of allegiance. If you can, those of us in St. Will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. That's easy without all the like. All right. We have participants with public comment or any that has questions? We have ten?
We have six attendees. Looks like Sam, Claire, I'm not sure who Joy Larrabee is, Amargo. Then we have Dr. Muir and Ted from Solar Wolf Energy.
Just take a minute. If anybody has a public comment they want to make, raise their hand. And I will address individuals now.
I see no hands raised.
Okay, we have no public comment. We'll move on to the first agenda item, which will be Solar Wolf Energy donation. Are they on?
Yes, yes. Hi Ted.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me.
Well, thanks for coming.
So what questions do you folks have for me?
Well, generally, we're, for us, we're around, there's this donation, including an equipment or a full installation. And does it have to be a specific type, you know, ground versus roof mounted? Or possibly like the parking lot spaces, they give us shelter and gain solar? What sort of things we limited to or receiving?
Sure, so we have to submit through the building department, as we know, electrical and building. And what we've submitted for, what we're looking to do here is a roof-mounted structure. You guys have a nearly perfect, on the police station now, 180-degree azimuth for a solar array facing due south, a pretty optimum pitch there as well. So what we figured was, we would install, I think it's 30 Sylfab 320 panels on the roof. And there is no cost to the town, labor, materials. It is a complete turnkey package donated at the behest of my wife and I.
That's very generous. Thank you very much. Do either of you guys have any questions, Dylan or Matt, or concerns?
I do, I just want to clarify, and I understand these could be unknown costs. The interconnection service agreement and steps with National Grid and potential impact study costs, is this something that you're saying is also part of your donation?
Correct, it's all, we absorb the fees and the costs, so that it will cost the town absolutely nothing.
What role would you like in the town, other than we say okay, when it comes to any like final sign-offs or, you know, I guess, in that regard, you're going to need someone, probably our town administrator or our chairman, to sign off on certain paperwork, something that the owner agrees and gives you, you know what I'm saying?
Of course, yep, exactly. So what we typically do for, again, for usually building departments, interconnection whatnot, they want to see some sort of a contract. So what we've gone and done is use, I believe it's only a two-page contract, that we use for every customer, client, residential or commercial alike. Basically, just signing off, and then within that paperwork, we'll also have something basically stating that we can pull a building permit on the town's behalf, using our license and insurance. Sometimes when we do projects like this, the building permit is waived. The fee is almost always waived, but sometimes the permit itself is waived, depending on what state we do this in. We've done this a bit over the years. So that really depends on the building inspector. My office can, of course, reach out and coordinate that with, you know, how they want to proceed.
Okay. My recommendation normally is to waive the fees, but we'll still include the building inspector's inspection process.
Of course, of course, yep.
And that's my opinion as well. Dylan, do you have any input on that or opinion on it?
Yeah, I have no, no further questions. Matt covered what I was going to ask.
She'll be on.
Questions while you hear about that?
Just what are we looking at for a timeframe?
Ted, questions, what are we looking at for a timeframe?
Yep, got it. So once we get this kicked back and signed, from someone that can sign, has the power to do that over there at the Town of Barry, we'll submit it for, again, we'll have to work with the building inspector, make sure he still wants engineering certified. I mean, obviously, the building is only, is rarely new, so I'm pretty sure we can work on that together with, if it even needs engineering or not for the permit. Obviously, the interconnection follows suit from there. They can have it anywhere up to a few weeks, and then we can go ahead and turn around and get that in. Optimally, we'd get this in before the snow starts to fly.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
Quick question, and we probably need to confirm this. Do we, as a board, have the authority to accept this as a donation, or does it actually have to go before the town at a special town meeting? I want to make sure we don't get ourselves backtracking, that's all.
Well, I've checked out with the town council, but I would think that we can accept the donation, this isn't land.
And I'm not looking to hold anything up, I'd love to just race through this, but I think if we did that, and then find out it required a town vote, then we're just creating more trouble than we want.
Well, I think we certainly have the authority to go ahead and contract it and put it up and spend money, funds on it. We're just spending zero funds in this contract, so I'd be surprised if it wasn't within our obligations and duties here, responsibilities, whatever we want to say.
Exactly, I just wanted to make sure we dot that i and cross that t before we take the next step, but I'm all in full support of this.
As am I. I do, would like to make a motion to accept that pending attorney's approval. Move forward that motion.
I make a motion that the board of selectmen accept the donation and the turnkey installation of a solar array at the police station, as presented by Solar Wolf Energy, pending verification from town council that the board of selectmen have that authority.
Well, I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to second to accept the donation from Solar Wolf Energy. We have a discussion. There are not going to be a call for vote, all those in favor?
Matt Urban, aye.
Dylan Clark, aye.
Thank you very much, Ted. And hopefully, we'll find out before the end of the week, and a comment back from town council.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you very much, once again.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, thank you very much.
Green Communities Energy Reduction Plan is next. You have somebody on?
Yep, we have Anne Kelly Brown.
Welcome, Mimi and Kelly.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
You can.
This is, this is Mimi, Kaplan. I don't know, can you see me too, or is this just audio?
It's just audio, but I can see if I can, are you going to need to share anything?
No, no, that's okay, I can just be audio, that's fine. So yeah, so thanks for having us to talk about adding the schools to the Green Communities Energy Reduction Plan. I think, am I, I've had some issues in the last few minutes with my screen freezing, so let me know if there's any technical difficulties, and I'll just call in.
So far so.
So far so good?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we had a really good meeting on July 21st with the Quabbin Regional School District, the superintendent, and also Claire Barnes, facilities manager was there, and Jessica and Kelly. And so we discussed, you know, this has been talked about for a couple of years, because the Town of Barry has been a designated Green Community since 2011. You were one of the pioneers there, got designated, I think that was the third year, second or third year of the program. And at this point, the town has done a number of projects, and there are not a lot of projects left to do that, you know, are really viable. And adding the schools to the Energy Reduction Plan would really provide a lot of new opportunities for the town to save more energy. Schools are big energy users. I don't know, I'd have to look and see if they're the biggest energy users, they may be, they probably are in the Town of Barry. And it would be, it would provide a number of new energy efficiency projects that could, you know, let the, provide opportunities for the town to save more energy, save costs, and obviously help the schools as well. So we wanted to talk to you tonight, just to make sure that the select board understood the whole process of adding the schools. If you had any questions, we can answer, and if you are, this is something you want to do, if you're on board with the idea of adding the schools, since both the middle high school is in Barry, as well as the elementary school. So I thought, what I would just do is just kind of go through what the process is. I don't know if you have any questions before I jump into that?
I have no questions at the moment.
Okay.
So you've explained it pretty well, we're running out of projects for Barry. To keep on, we'll go with the schools and see what we can do to reduce there.
Yeah.
And this is, just before, this is Kelly Brown. So I'm the Central Mass Regional Coordinator with Green Communities. I've been working with a few different town administrators over the years. It's great that Barry's been a Green Community for, you know, nine years. It's really common, after a while, for a smaller town to address a lot of their own needs, and through the grant program, but then decide that, you know, once you're not having as many projects, maybe to look back at the schools and add them to the Energy Reduction Plan, and put them in the baseline, and make that modification make sense. Just to make sure everyone knows that the Green Communities Grant Program provides, when an applicant comes in, they can ask for up to $200,000 in grants. And Barry has definitely taken advantage of the program, and utilizing the different funds at many of the different town buildings. But it gets to the point where you guys haven't really come in for that 200 in a while, or needed the 200, because, you know, there hasn't been that many projects. So that's another reason to look at the schools, and if things need to be done there that could benefit the district, why not take advantage and add the schools in? And also give the town more possibility, more possibilities to save energy, and also results in, you know, dollars saved too.
The one thing I would say upfront is, obviously, probably pay first attention to Ruggles Lane, since that's wholly a town school. And if there is still available, they have to absolutely go towards the middle school, high school.
Yeah, I just want to make, so when you guys put together your Energy Reduction Plan initially for the town buildings, you're going to look at the list of projects that are identified, and then you're going to put them in list, in the list by priority. And you're going to have the same opportunity to do that when it comes to the projects that are identified at the schools. So once the reports are done, and you've seen what projects they have identified, you know, mechanical, lighting, weatherization, you're going to look at what you would want to come in first, and it's going to be a similar process. It's really the town that signs on the application that gets submitted with those school projects listed. So just to your point about the elementary school, if there's projects there that you wanted to put on top of the list, you'd just be able to do it the same way you did with the town-funded projects.
Excellent, well, let's, let's begin then.
Okay. All right, thanks Kelly. So at the meeting that we had on July 21st, one of the things we discussed was what vendor that the town and the schools would want to use to do the energy audits, and to come up with the list of potential projects that then we would include in the Energy Reduction Plan. So then, that, once that is accepted, and then the town would be able to choose from whichever of those projects was, what the town was most interested in doing, as Kelly just mentioned. So the decision was made to use, well, Kelly, you can chime in here, but they, Jessica and the school district decided to use, on the advice of the utilities, National Grid, to use a company called Energy Conservation Incorporated, or ECI. And this company has been, this vendor has been working in Barry for, I believe, a number of years. I know they were working with them the last couple of years, since I've been working with Barry. So they're very familiar with the municipal buildings, they're very, they're actually, they were actually already familiar with the school buildings. They'd already done a partial audit, I believe, of Ruggles Lane in the past. And I believe they have, they may have either completed the audits of both schools already, or they're in process. I know they've, they've been in the schools. Chris Collins from ECI had been coordinating with Claire Barnes to get in, to get into both of the schools to do that. So as I say, ECI will provide a report and a list of the projects of potential environment, sorry, potential energy efficiency projects that will have good results, good payback. And then I will be writing up what's called a supplemental energy reduction plan, that then basically gets incorporated into the original Energy Reduction Plan. I mean, some, so some towns may add their schools right when they get designated, and then, then you don't end up going through this process, but a number of towns choose to not do this. So then, adding, you know, doing the supplementary ERP, adding it in, and then the schools are also, all of the energy usage data is also added into the town's baseline. So because, so I'll explain this a little bit, so because Barry was designated in 2011, that was the year of the, the energy usage baseline, that the town then said, okay, we are going to reduce our energy usage by 20% from this amount. So all of the energy usage from the schools that I'm putting into NEI, which is the energy database that we use, so I'm putting it in, going all the way back to 2011, and luckily, Claire and also Cheryl Duval in the office there, have been able to get me all of that information. So then, that, that basically revises the baseline for the town, since it's including the energy usage of the schools. And, and Kelly might be able to explain this better than me, but the way it works is, the percentage of the town's baseline, when you add in the schools, is based on the funding assessment that the town contributes to the district. And Kelly, could you explain that a little better? Because.
Yeah, so the way, we're not going to have you enter the full usage of the schools into your baseline, because it's not all coming from Barry. So one of the easiest ways to do that is to look at the funding that Barry contributes to the school district, and then take out that portion of the energy. So if it's, Jessica, do you know what, what's the funding percentage for Barry into the school district?
I do not, off the top of my head.
Okay, so, is anyone?
Close to 40%.
Okay, so if, so what you would do is you'd use that percentage of the energy consumed to add to the baseline with the town's usage. It wouldn't be the full 100% that's used at the high school. And that would also go all the way down to the elementary school, too. But then, just to clarify, if you're only taking a percentage of the energy, that also results in, in the projects that are identified, so, you know, if it's upgrading the boiler, or putting in a new, you know, energy management system, you're only going to take that percentage of the savings as well, so that they're equal to the amount of energy that you're including into the Energy Reduction Plan's baseline.
Right, so when you look every year, when you do the annual report, and you see how much energy the town's been saving, you're basing that on that revised baseline, but you're only taking, say, the 40% of the total savings, and attributing that to Barry, the Town of Barry. If that makes sense?
And then the other school, the other towns within the district, if they were doing this, they would be doing the same thing, and including their percentage. And ideally, if all the towns were Green Communities, including all schools, it'd be 100%.
And right now, there are a number of schools in the district, I mean, sorry, there are a number of towns in the district that have included the schools in their Energy Reduction Plan. I think, I'll, I'll accept Oakham, if I have this right. Hubbardston, Hardwick, hopefully, I'm not getting the schools wrong, the towns wrong. New Braintree, are those, those are all in Quabbin, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So Hubbardston is just become a designated Green Community. They were designated in 2019. They are looking at including all their schools, and are actually working with a separate regional planning agency, because they fall under Monticuceit Regional Planning Commission. And what Mimi's doing is working with the person, Karen, over there, who's helping the town also add the schools to their baseline. So I figured it made sense to try to do it together, because both towns are kind of in a similar process, similar time.
Are we using different baselines, though?
They have different baselines, but their audits are going to be done at the same, so it's the same audits, so you, you know, the same company's doing, the audit can give them to both communities to use as savings to go into their baseline.
Yeah, and they are also using ECI, so.
But just to clarify, New Braintree and Hardwick only have included their elementary school so far, they have not included high school.
Right.
What about Monty Tech?
Monty Tech has not been included, you can include a technical school if you want.
We're a small percentage of that, but I was just curious if that was something of the town to participate in.
Yeah, so far, the only schools that have been included is at the elementary school level. But to answer that question, if you wanted to include Monty Tech, you could. It is a little more complicated, just because, like you said, it's usually more towns that are contributing, but that is an option for you guys.
We're probably something like a 5% or 4% contributed there, so it's not as important, but it's just something else, if we need more projects to look at in the future.
Yeah, I mean, to, to your point about, I think you said it was Ruggles, when we spoke to Claire over at the school district and had the initial call to kind of kick this off, I do believe that that was one of the schools that she was saying really could have some opportunity to update. I think she was speaking more on the mechanical side, and more controlling the temperatures within the school. I believe she mentioned that school a couple of times as one to focus on.
I'd agree.
So it just sounded like you had quite a few projects that could already need to be done with just the schools that were on the list that we were discussing.
Very good. Now, this is all going to come out of our working grant money?
Yep, so basically, what it means is, you know, we already kind of talked about the fact that you guys have done a lot of the projects. If another project came up at the town level, and new, you know, new equipment, or new, something you wanted to be done, you can always add that right back in and get it assessed. We just thought this was good timing to bring in the schools, more potential for projects. It would modify the Energy Reduction Plan. You guys would obviously see it, they'd need to go back to the board for a vote, and you would have also the option to weigh in on, like I said, the priority of projects, because you are eligible currently to come in for a future competitive grant round, and ask for up to $200,000. And that doesn't include utility incentives that would, would be on top of that.
And as far as participating goes, is there a grant we need to apply for to have you guys kick this off and do this, or is there funds we have to contribute for this study in the schools, or is that all molded into the grant? I want to make sure I understand that, and if it's to start this.
Nope, that's a great question. So central, do you want to answer that, Mimi, from CMRPC's role?
Sure, so we, CMRPC is able to help the town with this, using district local technical assistance funding, which is provided by the state. I had gotten a letter from, I think it was from Andrew, before he left, requesting that, because we were kind of starting the process last year, and then we just didn't finish it. So that's how we are able to help you, so that you don't need any type of grant funding for that. Maybe Kelly can explain how ECI is funded to do the audit? Because the town, I have to contribute to that, either.
Sure, so ECI isn't actually funded, so the way that ECI, the way that it works on the assessments that go into the Energy Reduction Plans, and actually, you guys have been using ECI on the town side, like Mimi said, for a few years now, to identify projects as well, is that ECI is considered a project expediter of national grids. And then the way that that works is under 25A, there's an exemption, 1144C, that allows for utilities to contract directly with municipalities. And what they've done on the utility side is they put out, they put out a bid every couple of years, and they have these companies provide bids on pricing, and different types of efficiency projects, and then they select who gets on their list as a project expediter. And then it results in them acting on behalf of National Grid. And that allows them to take advantage of that 100,000 or less per measure, but it has, it's total installed cost. And that gives them the motivation to basically come out and do these free audits, that identify these projects that they're hoping to do, that are 100,000 or less, and work with you without going out for procurement. So they, so they provide these assessments free of charge?
So what do you need from us tonight? A vote to include the schools, or how are we looking for that to happen tonight?
So actually, tonight was just to update you. You guys have been a Green Community for a long time. I know that you have a newer town administrator, the last time I spoke to the town about it was back with Andrew, so I just figured it was a, Mimi, that we'd come, kind of talk about the process, let you guys know what would be coming, so that when you get the updated report and modification with the schools, you'd understand why the benefits to Barry as a whole, to doing it, and that you guys would, you know, it would kind of reduce those questions, besides any that's specifically related to the report and the process.
So you don't really need our approval or anything to move forward, you've got to go ahead and include the schools?
Nope.
What's going on?
Nope, the next step, the only thing, what you guys need to do is adopt the plan when it's done, which should be in a couple of months.
Yeah, like probably November.
Yeah, just to clarify on the percentage of these schools. Each town has its own elementary school, so they have their own electric, so are we actually separating the entire electric load from the whole school district, and dividing it up in five towns? Or is each elementary school specific to that town, and then it's just the high school and the middle school that we're talking about dividing up in the percentage based on investment of the school system?
So Barry would be looking to just include the schools that relate to the town, which would be elementary, middle, and high. And then what you would look to do is include, so towns that choose, such as New Braintree, that only included an elementary school, in those cases, we do have them include 100%, because it's usually all local to the town. But when they include middle school or high school that is spread across multiple towns, you would just include 40%. And it's not just electric load, it's total load, heating and cooling, so on the heating side, too. And what we do is actually convert it into MMTUs. So it'd be 40% across the elementary, middle, and high, because you're, if you include all three.
So the next question following up is if New Braintree, Hardwick, and Oakham do not include in their own Green Communities Energy Reduction Plan, the middle school and the high school, then the only contributing people technically is Hubbardston and Barry that are putting them into their Energy Reduction Program. Are we still only limited to our percentage of investment of the annual assessments? Or is it just only the two towns that have it in their plan, then split up the difference of the actual savings? Because we would be the only ones putting in applications from the Green Communities Grant to actually apply money towards those buildings.
Yeah, so that's a really good question, but the way that the savings percentage is calculated is based on the energy that you're including. So if you were only including 40% of the usage at the building? That would be why you're only including 40% of the savings. Because they need to be, they need to be equal to one another to have it, you know, to make sense within the baseline and the plan. If you were, I mean, I don't think you'd want to include more usage. And also, it is just like you guys, you know, nine years later are choosing to add the schools. Hubbard's, you know, Hubbardson's choosing right off the bat to include the schools, which can be the easiest road. But New Braintree or Hardwick couldn't, could have a similar reason and say, listen, we've done all the projects at the town and the elementary school. Now we want to include the high school and then they would take on their certain, their percentage. They can choose to do a modification as well.
Okay, but our elementary school, even though we have the high school and middle school, the elementary school would be something that for Barry. We would identify that in our energy reduction as 100% of energy savings for that school because it is specific to our town. But then the high school and middle school would be based on assessments?
It would be, so can I, so I guess it would be helpful to know a little bit of the arrangement with the regional school district. Um, what is the arrangement with the town for your local elementary school? What, um, what is the town responsible for?
All capital upgrades.
All capital upgrades?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, that doesn't mean that the school won't make some capital upgrades if they choose to. But technically, we own the capital upgrade costs for the school.
Okay.
Correct, if the town's owned the elementary schools and the school stops using it. The building revert back to the town, they leased the school for no cost, um, for them to run the education system there.
Okay, so the town owns, so just, I couldn't hear. The town owns the elementary school and you lease it out to the district?
Yes.
Okay. So let me look into that a little bit, um, because there is different arrangements between district to district. To see if, you know, it'd be a little more complicated to just 100% and then 40%, but it makes sense that that. That you take advantage of 100% of the savings. So I've seen some towns do just the 40% across the board. Um, but they've had more schools, like maybe a couple of middle schools and more schools that have a mix between towns as well. Um, so I'll get back to you on that as they're doing the assessments. Um, we can discuss a little more, Jessica, how to like look at that down the road. I'll go back internally and see if anyone else has done that.
Hardwick and New Braintree would be in the same boat as us. If they were funding their elementary schools at a pro rating, it would be a very, very low rating. Because they're down around 10 to 15% ownership.
Yeah, and right now they include just, they only include the 100% of the elementary school. But it's a good question to look at right now anyways, while Hubbardston, um, is looking at doing the same thing. Um, generally, like I said, we would just look at the funding percentage across all the schools. Um, but, you know, I'll take back the suggestion if you can include 100% of savings from the elementary school. And then just take the prorated amount for the larger school.
What we're saying, Kelly, is if New Braintree's running the elementary at 100%, so should Barry.
Yeah, so if, if they included, right now, if they were talking to me and they wanted to include the middle high school. I'd have them switch to the full prorated amount. And the middle high school is such a larger user, it would probably still work out, but, um, but I see what you're saying.
Well, we'll have to look at it both ways and see which way we want to apply it. Because maybe it would make sense then to only do the elementary school. Well, you know, we can look at it both ways first, I assume. And decide which way we want to go, whether we have to include the school now.
Um, well, I think the other piece would be that it would make sense to see what kind of projects are identified. And how, what benefits it would bring and getting grant funding to go to those projects. So I think everything we're discussing right now is in good timing. And then just, you know, also waiting to get the reports back. I think that will help you decide as well.
We'll make our decision on what to include after the report.
Yep, and then I'll also, um, get some more information on if that would be an option. Including the elementary school at 100% and then the middle and high school at 40%. And we can discuss all that at the same time.
I'm satisfied with that, Matt, how about you?
Very familiar with it, thank you. Um, thank you very much, Kelly, I appreciate this.
Dylan, any comment before we move off this topic?
Oh, thank you very much, Mimi and Kelly. Thank you for explaining this.
And I'll, um, I'll talk to ECI and find out when, about when they'll be able to have the report finished. Hopefully by like early October, so.
All right.
All right, well, thank, thanks very much, appreciate you inviting us to talk.
Thank you all for being here and I hope to hear from you soon.
Quick question, Mimi?
Oh, yeah.
Um, so we've got the high school and the middle school, but we also have the administration building. Do you know if that's part of the ECI audit scope?
Well, that's actually a really good question.
I would just suggest we double check and see if it's something we should make sure is on the list of things to check.
Uh, yes, because I don't know, I don't know if ECI audited and I, we didn't discuss that in our meeting. A lot of times administrations within one of the school buildings, so.
It's a substantial sized building, it's newer, but still, it's good size and a lot of people working there.
Okay.
We have good heat and AC drain.
Right, yeah, and that, um, I guess that would be also the 40% because that's. Um, yeah, that's the district. Okay, yeah, I will, I will talk to ECI and I'll talk to Claire too, so they can coordinate that. I'm getting in there.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.
Okay, thanks a lot. Good time.
You're with us yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, what's that, Matt, go ahead.
Well, I had one last question and I didn't know, uh, based on our, our percent assessments that we're talking about on, uh, claiming the energy, energy reduction. If similarly, uh, um, applications fit that. So for example, if one year Hubbardston, Towneberry and any other town that. Put the high school. Would we be able to potentially, from the state's perspective, look at three different applications that could get up to 200,000 or 600,000 into a high school lighting upgrade? That, you know, as, as combined communities or, or would you look at it as, well, they're only 40% in there? So we'll only review potential 40% of the total 200,000 application threshold?
No, so the, so that's a really good question and one that, um, comes up. So just to split it into two answers. So the first answer is the way that we look at your application submittal is separate per town. So we have had regional school districts that have come in for a project and they've done it different ways. Sometimes they'll come in for separate pieces of a project and kind, that they can break out. And then they've also come in jointly with two separate applications. So you could do maybe a lighting upgrade, one does the controls, one does the actual fixtures. You could do it that way, um, which, you know, they've decided to do it, I think, probably different reasons. Um, but to answer your question, if you had three towns in the district that all had the high school, you could each come in for 200,000. For separate types of projects or towards one big project?
Thank you very much.
Um, and then to the other point, it doesn't, so the 40% is, you are counting the savings at 40%. But that doesn't reflect, it doesn't cap your eligibility on the grant side at 40%.
Thank you again. I have no further question.
Let's go, thank you, Kelly, and we're going to move to, uh, Dr. Muir, Sheila, welcome.
Hi, welcome, thank you. Thank you for inviting me to the meeting. I just, I know you had asked for an update and the, um, opening of school, which was, we had day one today. So I, um, just wanted to kind of just come to the meeting and give you, give you a little bit of update. But just to the last topic, I, I do know that, um, ECI has started the, um, the assessment of both Ruggles Lane and the middle high school. I do not believe that when we met with CMRPC that we did discuss the, uh, central office building. So certainly, I know the audit is not complete, I, but it has been started. So, uh, just to give you that little bit of information.
What we can add in?
Great, that would be wonderful.
Okay, tell us about school.
So school, we had kindergarten and grade five students start today at the elementary school. And we had, uh, grades six, nine and 11 start, uh, just the blue cohort start today at the middle high school. And everything went very well. Um, we had a great deal of support from, um, the Barry Police Department and, and we greatly appreciate, um, their support. I know that they worked, um, very hard with our administrators at Ruggles Lane School to have an effective traffic pattern for, um. The drop off and pickup of students. I wasn't at Ruggles Lane this morning, I ended up in Hubbardston. But, um, I did talk with the principals there and they said that things went very, very well. Of course, um, you know, with a smaller number of students in our transition to school plan. Each day we'll be adding additional students at the elementary school this week. And, um, so there'll be greater and greater numbers of, um, not only students, but parents dropping off and picking up. So we're going, we're going to watch those, uh, traffic patterns really carefully and, and continue to work with, um. The local police department and making sure that, uh, that that is all going smoothly. But, um, everything got off to a great start. Students were thrilled to be back in school and for the most part, of course, the younger students more thrilled than the older students. But that's the way things go. And, um, and teachers and, uh, principals were, were just so excited to be, to have a chance to, uh, work with their students again in a, in an in-person environment. And of course, we do have, uh, students who are learning remotely, 100% remotely right now. Across the district, it's about 21% of our students who have chosen the complete remote option. So, um, that number is changing daily, um. We, you know, we've had, we have people coming and going from in-person and hybrid learning to remote and back and forth. Um, and we, we do expect that will happen over the next several weeks and, and hopefully by the end of September. Those numbers will settle a little bit and we'll have less movement. It will be, it's, it's a little bit challenging for us to manage all of that movement and to keep everyone on pace. So we're hoping that, uh, settles down a little bit in the next few weeks. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
You guys have any particular questions about that?
Dr. Muir. I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask how the, um, how the busing is going.
The busing has been going very well. We were initially very concerned that we would not have enough buses, uh, bus capacity to. Bring all of the students to school at one time. But we have been able to manage it with just one tier of buses to the middle high school and one tier of buses to the elementary school. So, uh, we've had the support of parents. We've, we've asked parents to help us out with driving whenever possible. And many parents have been able to do that and that's been, been very, very helpful. Of course, it does contribute to the traffic challenges. Um, but, but it's, it's enabled us to get all of the students to school in one tier, which, uh, which again was, was very helpful. And makes the scheduling of our school day much easier.
Tell us a little about what happens when the kids get to school. Are they temperature scanned, are they greeted with people telling them how to go? What's it like to walk in the door and say?
Yeah, so they are not, we're not scanning anyone for temperature. We've asked parents, uh, to do a health screening before they, before they make the decision to send their children to school every day. And we've asked parents to, um, it's, it's an honor system. Uh, but we've asked parents to, you know, make sure the child doesn't have a sore throat or a fever or any symptoms of, of illness. Before they put their child on the bus or put the child in the car to get them to school. And then, um, the, this, the staggered start and the staggered transition where we're bringing fewer, um, grade levels of students to school initially. Was really designed to help make sure that each day we had, um, a great number of adults to work with a small number of children in the first few days of school. So as students got off the bus, we had, um, lots of adults outside directing them to, um, to their placements. Um, again, the kindergarten students were, you know, they're, it's their first time coming to school. So it was, um, it was a little challenging, I have to say, for the, for the teachers not to, you know, put their hands on the students and guide them in a direction. And, um, you know, sort of get very close to them. It's, it's hard because some of those students were, were very, very nervous. But, um, again, I wa, I wasn't at Ruggles Lane, but I know that i- in all of our schools, there were lots of adults to help those students get to their classroom. And really, the, this week is all about teaching the students our, our routines, helping them understand, you know, when they should. Um, wash their hands, how to walk in the hallways. We have lots of, um. Markings in, in our hallways and in, in, in all of our school spaces to help students understand six foot distancing. Uh, and so they're, they're really very slowly walking students through all of those protocols and all of those expectations. So they can become very familiar with it and, and, um. And it, so it becomes sort of second nature to them, um, going into, um, the component of, of learning. So we really took the approach, go slow to go fast. And we feel as though if we establish these routines and students get very, very comfortable and build those strong relationships with their teachers. That, um, once, once we move into next week, we can really start to hit the ground running with the curriculum in a very, um, significant way.
Matt?
There was a, somebody chatted in and wanted to ask a couple of questions. Apparently there may have been an issue with, uh, access or logging into remote learning this morning. I don't know if Sheila, you're aware of that or if there's anything you could say about that as well. Another follow-up question was. Wow, I'm having a hard time going back to where I found that question. But it was about high school remote learning. And if you could kind of explain what you're providing or how is it available?
There, there was some confusion this morning. I do believe that, um, some students were not able to log in initially, uh, but people did reach out to us. And, um, I, as far as I know, all of those issues were resolved. Uh, we, you know, there, we, we try our best not to have any glitches or any bumps in the road. But, um, what we're doing is pretty complex. And so we do understand that there, you know, there, there will be some times when, um, something happens and, and a student, um, can't log in or something like that. But we really try to be very responsive when, when we're made aware of those situations. So I do, I did hear, I don't have, um, exact details on, on what the issue of concern was. But I did hear that there were some students who were, um, unable to log in initially this morning. And I do believe that, um, those issues were resolved by either our tech department or at the school level. But certainly if someone is in the meeting and that wasn't the case, I would encourage them to, um, to email me directly. Or email, um, the district tomorrow morning and we will address it immediately.
All right, thank you.
Probably a good point to touch on briefly, um, improved internet access. I know we had Jessica and Sheila talking and Matt, I don't know how involved you were in the conversation with that. But what have we discussed about getting together with the schools to improve our internet access? And have we gotten anywhere with, um, with charter or with any plans?
We did meet with, uh, we had a conversation with Jessica and Andrew Walsh, our technology director. And, um, it seems as though, uh, what, what charter was, um. The potential, I think, that charter, uh, made us believe was there may not have been a quite as, um. As ideal as what we had first anticipated. So we were very excited that, um, initially that, that it was going to be an opportunity for, uh, charter to provide internet access to, um, parts of the community. That I know you're very concerned about. But it turns out that once they realized that there weren't many students living, even though there, I think there were some, some educators. Living on some of those streets, maybe, and maybe they're not even just Quavon educators. I think they may even be educators in other school districts. Um, it didn't seem as though the interest was there on the, um, part of charter to, um, to take that on. I don't know, Jessica, if you want to add?
No, um, that's, you know, that's really where I've left off too with them. Um, I unfortunately kind of, I guess it sounded really good. But, um, unfortunately, a lot of times these projects are very expensive. But unfortunately, a lot of times these projects are very expensive and Charter will look for long-term incentives. And it doesn't look like they saw any long-term incentives. But I did just get a communication from the state today saying that there's going to be a community compact grant opportunity for infrastructure, technology infrastructure. So I'm going to be meeting with the state, probably our state representative, our state senator here pretty soon to figure out if we can apply for that grant to build our infrastructure. You know, we are eligible for up to $200,000, which would be fantastic on top of the $100,000 that was voted on in the town meeting. So I'm, that's kind of my next striking zone.
Still gets us probably less than halfway there where we need to be, but it's, it's a much better start if we can do that. I haven't talked with Senator Goby or Representative Bertham yet. I don't know if either of you have. Matt or Dylan?
I haven't.
I have not.
I haven't since we pretty much kind of brought Jessica into it. I didn't want to kind of run parallel conversations where we're not necessarily all on the same conversation. The one thing that I do want to point out is we've had, some people say on Murphy Lane, somebody said, "It was going to cost me $3,000 to get cable down to my house." Well, they're not the first house on the corner. So to then get a quote from Charter saying that it would cost, I don't know, $10,000 or more to run it down the street, kind of makes me say, all right, what's Charter charging us and why is it three times as much as they were charging this one individual? When it's pretty much still the whole street being covered plus service to the house was $3,000, but they're telling us in that ballpark estimate we use that it's significantly more. So what I would ask is we really need Charter to be willing to sit at the table or Spectrum now and really work through these details as if they're a committed partner in this, not just someone throwing out info and hoping we forget about them or we'll get to them next year or the year after. I know it's, it's historically towns working with Charter or Spectrum or other cable companies. It seems like they have some verbal commitment or something. They get to a certain point and all of a sudden the other side drops out and then they're running around looking for grants, then they get a grant approved. But then Charter steps back in and all of a sudden it messes up the whole grant. So we need to know that they're actually committed. And part of what I'm looking is not just to get cable on some of these roads, but a lot of us, I think, experience not the best of service or we have issues with our, our video feed, not, well, even when I do these Zoom meetings myself from Williamsville Road, I, they'll say that you're, you got a poor signal and a quick stutter in the video. And that shouldn't happen with broadband. That's not happening because of the cable size. That's happening because of the equipment we're connecting to and how Charter or Spectrum has laid out our town and set up the servers or the switches that connect us to their system. So I'd like to explore making it so that not only we can do what we need to do, but if we want to upgrade a certain part of our business district, so somebody could put in office space for rent, they can say, yeah, you can have business-level internet access at this space. So those are part of the conversations I'm looking, so that we're truly upgrading the system, not just upgrading to a system that's still five years old.
Thank you, Matt. I wonder what portion of that should be done by Charter, Spectrum anyways, keep the system upgraded. I'd be very curious to see if those people have a quote or a written quote for that cost of under their house that we can put back against the expense they've quoted us. If they are substantially different, that's something we need to bring forward to the, to the center and the representative. If they're quoting the municipality differently than they are cost of us. Now, that I'd take great exception to if that was really the case. So if you could see if they have any kind of quote that demonstrates that. I think that warrants some serious, you know, inspection if that's the case. Dylan, anything to add?
No, I have nothing to add on this topic.
All right, well, we just glad that I was still talking and going forward with the grants, Jessica. I just didn't want the topic to die. I thought we'd pick it up during the school topic. It's even appropriate. We're talking about people that are coming in from homes. Now the question for Sheila would be, what are we doing for the kids that don't have internet at home? Is there a place there being allowed to log in or something set up for them or is that not a bad issue?
We do have about 102 families that said when we did our survey over the summer that they had either poor internet or unreliable internet or no internet across the district. And we have applied for a Department of Education grant to obtain hotspots for those families. We recently heard that we did have the grant and we have placed an order for the hotspots. I don't know at this time, I, I just haven't checked with our tech director as to what the expected delivery date is for those hotspots. We are also, but, but as soon as we get them, they'll be sent to those, sent to those homes and we'll be providing what we can. Of course, that may not solve the problem for every family. If, if they're in a place with poor cell service, I think that may still continue to be a problem. So we're, we're sort of handling those situations on a case-by-case basis. As of right now, we're just, you know, again, we're just beginning the school year. So we have not had anyone reach out to us with, with issues of concern. But we do anticipate there will be issues of concern. We are hoping to open New Braintree Grade School as a remote learning center that will allow a place for families to have their children go if they need internet access. It's, it's a little bit tricky right now because the state guidelines that they, that were released for those remote learning centers only allow students up to age 14 to attend. I know that they're trying to fill a, fill a gap, but a childcare gap, but it doesn't necessarily address the internet gap that exists in rural communities. So I'm trying to work with the state to try to find a way to expand that age range in communities where the issue isn't just childcare. The issue is a combination of some people need childcare and some people need access to the internet. So I'm, I'm working on that currently.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else you want to update us on to tell us about before we move on? Let John speak for a minute, Chief?
No, I, I think that's it. We just sent out a video. We had hoped to get it out earlier, but with everything that was going on, we had, we didn't. But we just sent out a video this afternoon to all of our families and that really gets a glimpse inside the school district and shares with them all of the things that we were doing to keep the students safe and healthy and gets, gives them a glimpse of what inside our classrooms look like this year. So that should help, I think, families who are, you know, perhaps on the fence about remote learning and in-person or hybrid learning. There are some folks, again, who, who had a great deal of difficulty making the decision as to which type of learning their children were going to engage in. So we're hoping that that will reassure parents that the schools are safe and that their, their children are going to be well taken care of when they're in school. And so that, if you, if you, that will be available on our website as well. But I can certainly send it to Jessica, link to Jessica in case you want to take, take a look at that.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
And I guess one piece we haven't talked about yet is I know you spent the last week or two with the teachers only to get them some training and coach them along on how the school's going to run now. Is that going smoothly? How the teachers, you know, done with this change?
It actually went very, very well. We had 10 days of teacher training. A great deal of it was devoted to teacher planning time so they really could revise their curriculum and make the necessary changes to get all of their curriculum organized in Google Classroom. And I, I may have mentioned when I was here last time that we have expected our teachers to use a consistent interface. We're calling it the Week at a Glance interface. And so all students and families across the district have a common interface that links them to Google Classroom, but outlines all of the expectations for learning across the entire week. And that was something that we, we had received feedback from parents about in the spring, that it was a little bit difficult to navigate the way Google Classroom was set up. Each teacher set their Google Classroom up slightly differently. And with, if you were a family that had multiple students in different grade levels, it was a little bit confusing. So we, we took that feedback very, very seriously and we created this consistent interface. So it really outlines all of the week and it's a sort of a one-stop shop for everything that a student needs to know, for student or family needs to know for the week, for each individual class. And so the teachers learned about that interface and worked to organize their curriculum into that structure. And we did a lot of health and safety training with the teachers and had them walk through what a typical school day would look like and, and really carefully planned all of the protocols. You know, how does, how do students leave the classroom to go to the restroom? When do we take our mask breaks? Where do we take our mask breaks? How often do we take our mask breaks? How does a student access the nurse's office now? What happens in the medical waiting room? Just lots and lots of new things for, for teachers to be comfortable with so that they could then help the students be comfortable with them starting this week. So it, it went very well. We had, we also had some professional, professional, professional development, if you will. We had the Highlander Institute from, from Providence, Rhode Island, which is known for their expertise in blended, and blended learning. And they spent a morning with our elementary teachers and a morning with our secondary teachers, giving them some new tools and strategies to use in the virtual learning environment. And they are, they partnered with us last year with our blended learning pilot and they'll be working with our teachers throughout the school year as an ongoing professional resource to support the effective delivery of the curriculum in the virtual environment.
Sounds like they covered a lot of material.
We, we sure did.
Excellent. I don't know if we'll keep you on while we have the chief address us just in case there's any, or we'll have any issues. If you don't mind, stay with us and we'll hand the floor over to John Carbone to, if you want to come in. I'll scoot away from you here. Jessica's microphone is right here.
You know, if I can be heard, am I audible?
Yes. I hear you loud and clear.
Good. Okay, good evening. Wanted to give you an update on the things happening with the police department. So I'm going to give you a brief overview and then get to a couple of really big things. As you might have seen, we, the department placed third in New England in what's known as the Community Policing Award, which we're very proud of. That's quite a, a big honor and it doesn't lose room for improvement, but it was, it was a big move. We had our open house on August 8th. We dedicated plaques to past chiefs. I encourage anybody and everybody to come by and see them. They are amazing. We are starting to plan very scary. And as far as we know, it's going on. We've already secured MEMA's involvement. As far as they're concerned, we must hold differently. It's, there aren't going to be restrictions that would prevent us. So started already talking to Jessica about that. And I imagine we'll have meetings coming up soon. The, we are in the process of ordering our next police cruiser. We took the Dodge Charger. And unfortunately, production has been limited in the United States. So we're not looking to see that vehicle until March. We have, we are trying to get back to normal, which means I'll be talking to the school about using some space for the Citizens Police Academy so that we can do some social distancing and still get that off the ground. We have a dirt bike issue in town that we've received a number of complaints about. We've, we've issued a number of citations regarding that. But it's been a big problem throughout the Commonwealth. A lot of, you know, the shutdown has left people with a lot of free time. And unfortunately, this is one of the byproducts. So we've been working with the environmental police on that as well. Just to keep anybody out there who's experiencing that, you know, updated that we are making moves forward and we have, as I said, we've issued some citations and we think we've solved some of the problems already. Then going to, this past Friday, I'd just like to comment and say that we had absolutely terrible situation in town with a homicide. I would, to take away from this is that our officers performed flawlessly, that the district attorney Early's office and the state police were invaluable in their assistance and that if, if we look at this in any way, shape or form, our officers really were up to the task and were able to perform in such an absolutely horrible situation. So not that, you know, it wasn't a bad day, but it could have been worse. Now, moving on to the school, we've made the adjustment, you, working towards using COVID funds, the CARE Act funds. We've had to move our SRO to a five-day schedule on Monday through Friday, where it was on a four-day schedule, thereby missing some days every, you know, every rotation at the school. And we moved them to a five-day schedule because with the bus situation, especially at Ruggles, the traffic situation and the extra help that's needed because of all of the parents dropping off, we just felt he had to be there. So we've worked again through the town administrator's office to get some of that funding for the SRO. So he is there in the morning and in the afternoon to help with buses. And we expect that he's going to be at Ruggles Lane around lunchtime because we think that's going to be a time that they can use to help. We also have brought in officers to help with the traffic, at least for the first week and a half, so that we can help educate the parents. And we're looking for any types of flaws in our plan so that we can work those out. We're working closely with each of the administrators so that this goes off very well. This morning and this afternoon, there were dry runs because so few of the students and parents were there compared to what we're going to have next week. Everything did go well and we're just going to continue to move forward until we have that done to, again, a smooth-running operation. The, I would just say that to anybody that's listening, if you have any questions, go to our website. We have the maps drawn out and we have the, all the rules that we've gotten from the school posted up there. So it should be able to, it will answer all of your questions. And if you have any further questions and you need to contact the police department, please do. And we'll tell you whatever it is you need to know to, to make this smooth. With that, do you have any questions?
Thanks. You guys' mics off or no questions?
I have no question.
Okay.
No questions, no questions.
Sheila?
No questions, thank you.
Sheila?
Yes?
Don or the chief for the upcoming week and so with school, the resource officer or anything?
No, I just, I just want to echo, I just really want to reinforce how appreciative we are of the support that Chief Carbone and the department has, has given to us. It's, again, it's, it's one of those things that, you know, knowing that we have the police department as our partner has, has been tremendously helpful to us. And they really have, have supported all of the work that we've done. We, we appreciate our partnership. The school resource officer has been an amazing addition to our school district and has just developed such strong relationships with our students and, and with our parents and with our staff.
and with our staff. We are very appreciative of Barry PD.
Thank you.
I would also like to say that I'm also very appreciative of our police department. I know that the chief mentioned several things they've been working on. I would like to highlight their community policing program and the award they received for that. And I think this just illustrates part of why they won that award. They definitely do their best to reach out and participate in the community and the different groups of the community. And it's not always just a government office or a school district office they work with. So I just wanted to say thank you very much, chief. I think you got a good department.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And while we talked briefly on the very scary Halloween, what day of the week? I don't know yet. Is it Halloween, fall, winter?
Saturday.
We typically use the day anyways. We're going to get Saturday this year. Right. Excellent. Gentlemen, you want to take the moment to officially declare Halloween the 31st Saturday this year, so people know ahead of time instead of wait until October?
Sure. I make a motion that we officially declare that October 31st is the Halloween holiday for the town of Berry.
And you want to modify that? Actually, we left a little extra hours in.
I didn't want to talk about hours yet until they finished their development of what they're going to do. I think they're still trying to work out whether COVID will have an impact or how they want to spread out or use the site. So I thought we could wait on that.
So I have a motion to second to include the 31st Halloween in Berry this year. Any further conversation? Eric, now I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
Greg Olson, yes. Now, large a day in at least and we'll work on the hours. I know we played with the hours a little bit. We might want to do it again, give people more time to space it out. You know, people worry if it's too early that they don't get home from work. But we're not shorting the other end up. We just opened the early setup. We could certainly do that more this year, but we opened too early that people don't get home. They can't do their homework. But it's tough to think about. That's it.
Absolutely.
Anybody have any other questions? The chief always here? No? Do you have anything else? Has you had your fire alarm lock after install?
No, again, production being what it is, we think November, December, we've ordered it.
Well, this is coming up. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Dr. Miura, thank you. We'll let you go now. Let's get everything out. So we're going to move on.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You too. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Margot still here?
Yes.
That would be for our Felton Field Commission.
Correct.
Margot, welcome.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
There we go.
Okay. I'm not Margot.
You're not Margot?
No. This is Larry Marshall. Margot's here and Justin Pollard is here from the commission also.
Welcome.
And now we're here to talk about the brown property being donated to Felton. I know that you've talked to Rich Stevens. He gave it his blessing. And you wanted to hear from the Conservation Commissioner, which I believe Ronnie Rich is talking to you, has he not?
I haven't heard from him. He was going to look at it, but I haven't heard back. Jessica, you?
I received a letter today from the Conservation Commission saying that they approve the donation of the land.
Okay, great. And then you also wanted us to talk to someone from Historical Society, which I did, which I did do. And it's my aunt, actually. And Margaret Marshall, I looked into it and there's never been anything historically on that land. The only thing that's ever been close to that is where IT Curtis or Palmer Paving is now. And there was an old hat factory in the latter 1800s. It was Desper's Com Hat Factory that went out in the 1890s. So nothing's ever been on that property. And so nobody sees any reason why the town shouldn't accept the land.
Excellent. You guys have any other questions or comments?
No, only that I know that the Brown family is anxious for us to accept it so they don't have to pay any more taxes on the land.
We understand that. We're just obviously due process and make sure we don't. It sounded great from the beginning. Just trying to make sure. It sounds to me even better now. Matt, you have a comment? Look like you want to say something.
I think the next step, right, is we just got to put it on a warrant to have the town accept it. So that would either be a special town meeting that we may or may not end up doing this fall. I think we've discussed doing one. We just haven't. I mean, it's already September, so we got to figure out how that schedule actually will work out if we want to do one. I don't know if as a board and maybe, I don't know if we have to include like the Board of Assessors, but is there something where we could as a board allow a deferment of payments without penalty until the town officially votes? And if for some reason the town does say they don't want it, then they would have to make up the payments. But we could, I'm just curious if we could look into that. So we could see if we could, if we know the town's just going to take it. I know we have to officially do it through a certain process, but are we willing to, whatever methods we're legally allowed to, provide some of relief so that taxes aren't being paid that are just due to a due process issue, not necessarily what appears to be a desire of the town to own that land?
Well, that would be awesome if you could do that because I know they're getting a little impatient. And she said they have an opportunity to sell it and they'll do that if the town doesn't want to take it. So if we could do something like that, or if the town could do something like that, that would be really good.
All right. So we'll have to talk to the assessors and see if we can defer it at least for now. And as long as we can move forward with accepting the land, then we forgive, probably forgive the taxes. Because I assume it's just the current taxes. I don't think for 10 years or something silly in the years here. I believe they were current. It's just try not to pay more.
Right.
You know, we could have a motion to give the board's blessing to it. And if possible, we'd defer taxes as long as we can do so. But yes, we have to ensure that we can do that before it's done. We are not allowed to. We have to say that obviously stay long, we'll override our vote. That sounds good. We could do something like that. Or would you rather wait another week to get the opinion first, Matt? Dylan, if you have any comment?
I'm not sure what the best way to proceed is. If we, reaching out to the assessor's office seems like a smart next move. Maybe we could vote on this at our next meeting after we touch base with them and see what's possible.
I have no problem making a motion, the Board of Selectmen support trying to provide whatever mitigation or relief of taxes until a vote is formally put before the town. So that the assessor's office or other employees understand that what the board feels, so they're acting based on not just one member of the board's thoughts. So I'll make a motion that we support using whatever means we can either mitigate delay or kind of hold harmless the owners of the property until we can afford the taxes, until we can put it before the town at the next town meeting, whether it be special or annual.
I'll go ahead. I have a motion, Matt. We have a motion to second for us to endorse the town accepting the land and as Matt said, any relief we can come up with for the taxes until that time. Do we have any further discussion for that? Eric, now I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Dylan Clark, yes?
Greg Olson, yes. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Felton Field Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let them know we love to get the land. We just have to go through the process now. I think that's right. I think it needs to be a town vote to formally accept it. I'm confident that we can waive postponing and waive, at least, you know, make sure there's no penalties.
They will be very appreciative.
We'll make sure before it happens and confident we can.
Okay, that sounds great. I know that the Brown family would be very appreciative of that. So thank you very much.
If we can't, then the town can vote for sure and that would just go along with the land acceptance in the future.
Right.
Thank you.
Anything else for us before we let you go?
No, we're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item we have is the propane, heating oil and diesel contract award. Jessica, typically we would see, do we already accept these numbers? Do we go through them? We normally look at all the numbers and choose them.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that. I was trying to go back through old.
Do you grab the lowest ones in each?
Right. That's exactly what I did. I just did the lowest bid for each one. And so that would be EP Wine bid the lowest for propane. I forget the number off the top of my head.
RJ's on gas and diesel and fuel.
Yes. So that seems to be historically pretty standard for the town. Is that's kind of what we get for the lowest bidders? So that's what I.
Usually this comes to us in the format. We formally select them. And I don't know, if you guys want to wait, so we can read all the numbers to the town, who are we selecting from? Who would you like to trust our administrator? That she's given us the lowest three and proceed?
You're muted.
Matt, you're muted. Dylan, I don't see you.
You know, it's not a real meeting unless I mute myself at least two or three times. I would trust that she is presented, the lowest bidders and the draft contracts that she would be providing to each winner. I would just request that she submitted to the boards the bid results so that we can look at it our own. The town can always make a request for the same. These are public records. So if somebody wants it, they just need to ask the town administrator. She can provide that information anytime someone asks.
That would be my same suggestion there.
Yeah, I'll concur.
Okay. And I'd be looking to the appropriate motion, gentlemen. That would be for number two heating from RJ, 22X diesel from RJ and propane from EP Wine.
You're looking for the motion or that was the motion?
All right. I'll make a motion. We award the contract for number two heating and 22X diesel to RJ McDonald's and a propane contract for town of Berry TV Wine.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion to second for these contracts. Do I have any further discussion? If there ring none, I will call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, aye.
Dylan Clark, yes?
Greg Olson, aye. Pushing along, Rec Task Force discussion. Do we have somebody visiting us for that or is that just supposed to be amongst us?
That's supposed to be amongst us. Matt received some communication a week or two ago about, I forget which town it was from, but they were looking to convene a meeting of stakeholders to talk about regionalization of the Rutland Regional Emergency Communication Center.
We had some discussion, what's it been about, two years ago, Matt? We had a discussion about regionalization briefly?
Yeah.
Dylan, probably you understand what's going on. We talk regional now. Just a bigger step to what we have for our dispatch center now. The state's trying to push for regionalization and it's our dispatch in Rutland's belief that we will sooner or later be pushed into a region if we don't choose one or form one. So Rutland has proposed to us two years ago that we initiate this and be the ones to form the regional dispatch. Better to have a starting stake in it. It was their opinion that then get pushed into something else later and just be, you know, complacent to whatever they have established prior to us joining. Selectman Chase's dissension to this in the past was, he doesn't like the state getting involved. He doesn't like a bidder. He liked it smaller. But we never got too far into this discussion. This is the first time we've heard back on this topic in a couple of years. So I think we need to talk about it, see how we feel about it, decide who would like to go to this group. Because I would assume there's going to be some information disseminated from that.
So just to clarify, the email that I received from, I believe it was a the town administrator from Hubbardston, was sent out a request and it copied Mike Moriarty, the director of the Regional Emergency Communication Center, asking each town to identify two representatives to start participating in discussions about regionalization and development of a district. From my perspective, one of the big sticking points I recall having is, at the time, the state was kind of putting the carrot out there that we'll give you grant money for your RR ETC that'll help offset your budget. But there was also, it kind of means that the town is now connected to something very similar to the school district. It hit a certain point and they're going to assess the budget and you're just going to accept it. You're not going to have as much say as we could have. You're not going to quite have the same ability to bow out and jump into another district because of the way the state will kind of try to regionalize the districts and say, this is your district and this is what you get. You can't go elsewhere. And there were certain clauses in the way that the Mass General set up a district and pretty much said that you have to pay your assessment, no matter what the assessment ends up being. And there was no commitment for state funding long-term. And I think Charlie Chase and I both looked at it at the time and said, it's nice when they set it up and then in about four years, they stopped funding it. And now it's back down to a local burden. And we didn't feel comfortable with the way they were setting up the district's concept because the concern of a district being too spread out, not truly being familiar with the towns that they are serving, does create certain delays in service and misunderstanding between the people calling 911 and the people answering and getting confused with street names versus towns. And especially if it's the same street name crossing a town line, which direction are you are? And who's the first responder to call? So there was just a lot of questions we had. But I'm guessing that in reply to this email, we just need to find out who are the two town representatives we want to participate in this? I think a lot of towns are using a town administrator and potentially a board of selectmen or potentially someone from your emergency services groups, whether it's police, fire or ambulance.
And at this phase, I'm comfortable with the administrator and someone from emergency services. They want to, to the discovery phase. But if this gets to the point that they start talking about voting members and forming something, then certainly we need to reconsider and make sure we have a selectman on the committee. If it got to that point, because I believe this committee, much like a school committee, would ultimately be. If it got to that point, because I think, I believe this committee, much like a school committee, would ultimately be making the budget, forming the budget and dictating to all the member towns what they're going to pay. So, we need to make darn sure we have a voice in that that represents the select board because we are the budgeters for this town. That's our ultimate job. Certainly having the town administrator there helps with that. And we may need to, in the future, I don't know how soon they want this, but to find a position and how it's appointed, how often it's reappointed, and come up with some guidelines to that so that we would have the ability to replace somebody if we don't feel we're being represented properly. Did they give a timeline, Matt, of when they're looking for these two members to be identified?
They didn't give, yeah, I was going to say, did they give a specific date?
They said they wanted to know, it didn't sound like a hard deadline, but they said they would prefer to have everybody input to members by September 9th.
I wonder if this is going to be more information gathering at this point. Sounding, we might want one of us to be there, but when are they talking about meeting?
That has not been determined yet.
I think they want to set up the meeting once they get a response of who's participating so they can start kind of a group email distribution for that. I would, this is what I would recommend is, Jessica be one of the two for now unless we find that her workload would warrant another individual to participate on behalf of us. And we should ask to see if Chief Carbone or Chief Rogowski would like to participate at this stage. If not, then I think one of the three of us should step in as filling that role.
I believe Chief Rogowski is still on military duties. I think that stuttered, I think it was only a week ago, so I believe it should be a two week stint, so you probably don't have him available right now if they need a name. But we can certainly, I can reach out to him. I can text him and ask him. Do you have his cell?
Yes.
We could let Jessica do that then in message. You know, if he, he could at least, he could participate in the email message, trying to set a meeting up quickly.
It probably won't be, the earliest would be next week, but I think that would be even very early for them to set it up.
He could possibly, depending, I don't know if he's out of state drilling or if he's at headquarters where he is right now. I haven't asked him.
I think he's, I think he's back.
So, he could be okay. Well, a lot of times he'll just be drilling out of state.
Right.
So, he may do that.
By the way, he or Chief Carbone, they both have a significant vested interest in how 911 works in our town.
Dylan, you all right with that?
I am.
Yeah, I am totally okay with that.
Okay, so I don't know if we even need to vote on this. I'd just say, will I Jessica?
We do need to vote. We need to formally kind of pass on our responsibility to two representatives at this stage.
All right then.
So, I'll make a motion that we appoint Jessica Sizer as one of our two representatives for the Rutland Regional Emergency Communication Center Task Force. And either Chief Carbone or Chief Rogowski as our second, depending on which one is willing and able.
Second that.
Motion to second to assign Jessica to one position and one of our chiefs to the other. Any further discussion on the matter? Very now, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, aye.
Dylan Clark, yes?
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. And if that doesn't work out, we'll readdress one of us in the future. We'll just leave it at that for now. So, we can continue to move through air conditioned units over public walkways discussion. Do we have Bill online?
I don't know if he's on, under one of the phone numbers at 270. I don't think I have his cell phone number.
Did he raise this item up? Who brought this to the agenda?
I, I did initially and I don't know if he's got an input to it or not.
I was just reviewing bylaws and I do know there are certain bylaws where any private property overhanging a public way falls under the building commissioner's enforcement.
Do you have any phone number numbers up there?
They're both 978s.
Okay, so we don't have Bill. Okay, so anyways, I don't know if you guys got the message, email a few weeks ago. You probably recall, Matt, that I talked about sidewalks having ACs over down there. Someone's going to get killed someday. Well, it almost happened. No one got killed, but a sidewalk came down, AC unit came down, hit the sidewalk. And I got a letter from a customer that was at the store and he had the name of the store and the owner of the store who went out to inspect it as well. And I think it's time that we make sure that we don't have any more unsupported air condition, air conditioning units over our public sidewalks. What I found back in the day, and I didn't get a confirmation back from Bill. He thought, he thought he would have something in the administrative portion of the code which would allow him to decide it and stop that, that from happening and he called me back and said, there's nothing that gives him the authority in there. I commented back, questioned, I said, it was my impression that it fell under DPW as public ways, rights of ways, sidewalks included that, that public works would have the authority to cite on that, but I certainly think we as a board would have the authority to do something about our local sidewalks. I'm looking to have air conditioned units removed from the windows over the sidewalks everywhere until such a time as they have a proper support and that is inspected by our building inspector to make sure it's developed. comment thoughts?
I do believe we actually have a bylaw that covers this specifically. I was just reading it last week or the, well, it might have been last week. It might have been two weeks ago. Related to a different topic, but when I read it, it kind of hit me as I remember Greg was talking about this. So, it kind of lines up with everything we're talking about.
Excellent. And I understand some of those apartments are probably front apartments. I've been in there before for fire calls. I believe they are split front and back. So, it's not like someone has a front or rear window choice that that's what they've got for an air conditioned unit. But this needs to be addressed with the building owners and, and the tenants. You know, they certainly make floor models that you just put a duct tube in the window. I have one of my living room. Sometimes it's easiest way to go, which doesn't need any support, but certainly if you're going to hang it over the sidewalk, you know, just screwing it to the window sash isn't always enough. Someone pushes a window open, leans on it, it can still go out. They really need to be supported in either at least brackets or platforms. They really should be in a boxed enclosure through the wall. And I don't know how far we want to go if you want to dictate the type of support. I'm just saying that it has to be approved by the building inspector, I think, would be sufficient. But if we have a bylaw that already works towards that, we don't want to conflict with it. So, do you have any idea where that is? You want to readdress this next meeting? We'll try to find the bylaw.
If I can find it, I'll forward it to everybody just so you can see where, what I'm thinking applies. And then if you read it differently, understood, but I'll at least pass on whatever I can find again.
In the meantime, this would be something we take to the DPW commission meeting and direct our, the DPW commission could probably do it because we certainly, according to the code, have the right for public ways under the building code. Falls under the highway department. And sidewalks are certainly a public way. You know, we do keep them clear. We do maintain them. We did put that as part of our sidewalks and our town projects and we certainly own it. And I think we have the, you know, the obligation to make sure that people walking on them don't have 150 pound air conditioner drop in the head and kill them with their kids. And that's my concern. I'm glad nobody was struck. But probably this happening is going to call it to attention a little more. People don't think I'm being, you know, a little chicken running saying the sky is falling here because it's a real potential and now it's happening. I just want to make sure we addressed it. As I said, Mr. Cantel said he found nothing. If the, the upper language or the defining parts of the code that gave him any type of line of authority, we sure he find it. He didn't. So, let's find that bylaw. If it's not doing what we needed to do, then that's going to have to hit the agenda for a fall meeting as well. And I say fall, maybe early winter. I do intend to have one this year. We skipped it last year. I'm thinking I want to wait and see what happens with our collections, especially the November collections and maybe look to a January or February meeting. The worry was talking before the end of the year was that if the COVID continues the impacts, we may have a shortfall. Not so much with the collections, you know, in between the fall collection, but the November collection. We could come up short on funds. So, I would kind of like to hold a meeting off until after that. Maybe we could pick a date within the next month or maybe by next meeting, pick a date sometime after the collections are due. So, we'll have an idea if we need to take any action on money, cut spending, you know, spend down any more of the cash that we had set aside towards, you know, recertified as free cash. Maybe too late. I don't think it is yet.
Yeah, I think free cash only, we can only do up until the tax rate's been certified, correct? Which is only even before that, but they gave us an exception this year that allowed us to wait till tax being, tax rate being certified. So, that's usually what, October, November-ish?
Oh, I thought it was later.
Normally the assessors do their thing and then they set the tax rate. They generally want to make sure it's done in the second quarter so that the third quarter and the fourth quarter can, the tax bills can be adjusted in case the tax rate was different than the first two quarters were projected when the treasurer sent out the bills.
All right. Well, the worst case scenario there is the money we have left will roll over to free cash again next year. We won't see it until the spring. And if we really had to, no, I hate to talk about the stabilization, but that's what it's for. If we really needed something, if we took a big hit and we had to use some stabilization money, that would be the time that even I would be agreeable to use some. If we needed it. We'll look towards a fall, early winter for a meeting, see where we stand, good, bad or bad or ugly. We can address these other issues we talked about tonight and plan on doing a special. I think a little later will just give us more information. And if it means this money goes to free cash, if we took 100,000 from stabilization, we can put it back in free cash at the end of the year. If you know we still have funds left over, it will get recertified. So, whether we spent it out of that now or we let it roll over, replenish free cash, as long as we replenish free cash, stabilization. That's my only concern.
Yeah, and the only other difference is it, one requires a two thirds vote. And that stabilization usage, free cash is not a two thirds vote if I'm correct.
I don't think we're going to have an issue with that, you know, because we can look at, you know, cutting funds, cutting funding and doing reductions if we had to, to a point. There's only so much we can cut before we lose services. And the town can make a decision if they're willing to take it out of there and continue the services at fall or cut services. Let the town make that decision with their money at the time, if it's even necessary. We really, we don't know what's going to happen. We did, I think we underfunded about $250,000 in collections. We predicted a shortfall based on what happened last quarter. So, I think we've already made an allowance, come up a couple hundred thousand short. We could wind up flush and have excess collection. We really don't know. But I do want to plan on it. I do want to plan on a meeting, but not, not really fall, so it'd probably be early winter. Dylan, any word?
Yep, that sounds good to me. A special this early winter is a good idea.
Do you understand the reason why I want to wait?
Yep.
And last year we paused just because we had no purchases to make and no real reason to push it, but I think we have a few items we'll want to get through, you know, with the sidewalks, the CMRPC, the grant money and the energy reports and things. And we may have something to talk about. Who knows what happens with, but we have a few things we want to get on there. So, we'll definitely do it. Hoping, hoping early December, keep away from the holidays, get after Thanksgiving and get a couple of weeks before Christmas. We can hand it out.
Do you want to make this more of an official agenda item for the first meeting in October?
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Time to prepare, get answers, figure out timelines.
Yep.
Yeah. Our accountant is on vacation this week, but I am planning on having a lot of discussion with, you know, mainly our financial team about special town meeting. It was asked of me today when we were thinking about having it. I obviously gave Joshua Smith. I obviously gave no definitive answer, but what I am seeing from a lot of other communities is they're looking at late October for their special town meeting. So.
I think, talking to Sharon before she left, her concern was November. It wasn't, it wasn't now. I hate to react to what's going on now, good or bad, and find out it's drastically different in November. They've extended the unemployment payouts to an additional $300. That's still going to people, so it's not what it was, but people still have some money committed to artwork. But it's just impossible to guess, so I still would hold off until December. So, we'll push that off until October's, the first October meeting to discuss it. And we'll further discuss the air conditioned units at the second meeting this month. We'll look into bylaws and possibly bylaw reforming, which you go on to the special meeting. Next, we have the Voltrack software renewal. So, Jessica, tell me what I'm looking at, would you?
Sure. So, I was reached out to by Voltrack, which is the company that does the software for our electric vehicle charging stations outside of the Henry Woods building. They said that our contract was up and that we needed to renew. They reached out to me in late July and in that time I've been looking for other ways of funding this software update because I just, you know, wanted to be fiscally conscious, but also continue to provide this service to people who come through the town. It's not a huge expense. If we just want to do one year, it'll be 1,200 and then you can see subsequent years. It's more cost effective to do more years at once. That's why I wanted to bring it to you all to determine what you wanted to do for a contract. I also wanted to figure out a little bit more information about the electric charging stations because I didn't know how they were run here in Barry. And so, essentially what happens is somebody who owns an electric vehicle, they come to the building and they plug in their car. There's no expense to them. There's no charge for them to use it. It's also, so it's really just a burden on the town to continue having this without any charge, but then I also, you know, so I thought about suggesting a charge for these stations, but then I also kind of thought about, people really, I looked at what other communities were doing. I looked at a map of other charging stations and there's really no other community that charges for this service. And then I think about it, it's these people who drive electric vehicles. They plan their entire trip around where the location of these electric vehicle charging stations are. So, what does that mean when somebody comes into town? So what does that mean when somebody comes into town? They come into town to use this station, well, while they're charging their car for two hours, they can walk down to the common, grab lunch, or, you know, do other things, spend their money in town. So I don't know if it would be in the best benefit of the town to charge for that usage. And it's also, it would be very little what we would, I don't think we would break even on charging for the ports either. So the usage, I was looking at the usage dashboard, and before COVID hit, a lot of people were using the charging stations, a lot of unique users, not just the same person coming back every day. You know, we were looking at about 40 unique users in a month, which could be 40 people who are, you know, taking advantage of other businesses in town, which is really inspiring. Or maybe some people choose to relocate to town because they know that they can charge their car here. There's a lot of different possibilities, so I would recommend that the town continues to provide this service.
So, I'm disappointed. I thought when we bought a charging station, it was hooked up as ours and it worked. I had no idea we had to pay a software fee for the station to function. That's very disappointing. Is that just the station we chose and it does that? Or is there a software to run all of these? I would have thought we could have bought one that's ours.
So I, it's my understanding that it is, it's universal, everybody, every charging station has a software. Maybe there's bigger municipalities that maybe like Boston or New York City where they run their own soft, software for it. But I don't think it would be, I don't even know if there would be an option for us to kind of create our own software for this charging station.
Interesting. Dylan and Matt, do you guys know anything about the chargers and the softwares? More than I'm finding out here today, I really was not aware there was a software fee.
No, this is new, this is new to me as well.
So this isn't software so we can charge, this is software so the unit works?
It can be both. So we can, if we have this software, we are able to charge people to use the service, and it also allows people to just charge their car.
Is it necessary to have this software for someone to actually charge their car? Or is it just allow us to get the data to figure out the usage and, you know, in other words, it's kind of trending the data and creating a dashboard and a way to display that for us?
That's a good question. It's my understanding that these will not work if we don't have the software.
When is our license?
So-
A year ago.
Yes, it says that, so I know, yeah, that's a, the other thing is I don't understand why they gave us kind of like a year grace time to have, I don't know if it's because it's, it was a new software that was installed and that they're giving that extra time so we can continue understanding the impact it has on the community, or, or what?
Yeah.
I would like to clarify that with that, is, is this software just so we have the dashboard? Or is this so the charging unit actually functions? I find it arguably, at the expense of these units, requires a software to run. Don't know. Who's going to have more information on that?
I can reach out to the Voltrack representative. They've been really responsive to the questions that I had about, you know, potentially charging users and-
Well, 40 users a month, that's almost 500 in a year. You know, if there's a dollar charging fee, it would reimburse the $600 and change a year almost. The remainder would be for us charging our inspectors. But then, you know, at a dollar a charge, we bother. We just encourage people to come to town, which is what we talked about tourism and people visiting our town, it is our town's business. If I think the five-year plan, it's, you know, 600 and change a year.
Jessica, do you know, are there any green energy grants or anything like that we can try to apply for to offset the cost of this software?
Yeah, I looked into that-
I know you don't have that off the top of your head.
No, I've already looked into it because that was my first priority was make, was seeing if we could get it covered by, you know, other funds that weren't coming out of our own pockets. And a lot of these grants are only for hardware and rarely are ever for software updates.
I see.
There's no doubt we have to keep it functioning, but I want to make sure this is necessary before we do that.
I would recommend that either way, I'd make a motion that we approve a one-year subscription for a total of $1,258 to get us to what this identifies as a new co-term expiration date of September 20th, 2021. That allows us to properly and thoroughly investigate our options. I think 600 and some dollars a year, well, $600 per port is not a heavy expense for the services it provides, not just to the, our town members that may need electric charging. But I do believe it may not be the case now because I think we gave the town of Hardwick their electric car back because Bill's using his own vehicle for inspections where our previous building commissioner was using the town of Hardwick's electric car. So we may not have an in-house need for an electric charger at the moment because we're no longer using a municipal car that needs one. But I think the long-term benefit, one thing I would also ask to them is by being connected to them, does it also kind of, do they extend our location when people are looking for charging stations in Massachusetts? Is being part of Voltrack something that extends the marketing of our town? Or is it just they do this service and we're still having to do our own marketing to tell people that we do have electric charging stations in town? But I would make the motion to accept a one-year right now while we really work through the nitty-gritty to figure out what it is we need to do and how we would alter this, because I don't think you're going to get much of a better price anyway for what we need, and I think the overall cost is not too bad.
Yeah, I would second that. I'd second that motion, Matt.
All right, I have a motion in a second to purchase a one-year, two-port software from Voltrack. Any further discussion?
I have none.
Hearing no discussion, call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, aye.
Dylan Clark, yes.
And Greggo Sullivan, yes. So we definitely want to find out all those little, if we really need it, what it gives us.
Right.
And not to say that if it's only against the dashboard, if we do it, extend it for five years, $600 a year, we have a better idea, you know, how often it's going to use. We originally talked about looking into grant money to do more of these, but the problem now, I see if we do more of these, then we start to add our expense, we got to charge this per port. So that's before we think about that. We have to look into, if we're going to charge us, you know, every time we add another machine, it's going to be about $600 to $1,200. You know, restricts my desire to add more. Someone can drive an extra three miles to get to this, you know? Before we put a second one in.
The next place I might suggest we look into is putting one up down at Nornay Park so we extend our town-owned stuff to kind of the other side of town, so not everybody feels like they got to come up. Because, is this the only one we have here at Henry Woods Building, town-owned?
Yeah.
Okay, so I do think it would be a benefit to start trying to work our way across town. So here's a good one, but I think Nornay Park might be another good one. I like ideas where you can put it, but it's still visible from the street, that's why I'm not suggesting the senior center. Nothing against it, but there's no reason you want to invite people to park up there to charge their car overnight because it's, it's less secure, that's all. So those are the ideas I would suggest moving forward if we were going to do another. And I do think National Grid has a program right now, I think they're working with the city of Worcester. I'm not sure if you get your choice of connected behind your own meter and then you can actually charge people directly. I know Worcester had done some previous ones where you can act directly and it's like National Grid paid for the whole install, but it was intended to make sure people just had places to charge.
They charge-
Community, you don't make money, but you do have to pay for the electric usage from behind your own meter. So that might have been part of what this program was, is kind of like, we didn't really pay to install the charger, but because it was put behind our meter, we got to pay for the electricity to actually charge a car. And this may be something that we also need this software to help create that trend data, whether it's part of green communities kind of saying, you know, this is producing so much every year in a green communities report, I don't know. But I do know that sometimes that comes into play. I'm not very familiar if it would apply to what the town of Berry did when we got ours,
All right. Personnel committees. Wage authorization for Ms. Jessica Sizer. Apparently she's our town administrator. She'd like us to authorize her pay rate of $74,000 to the offer.
I make a motion to accept the wage authorization or approve the wage authorization for Jessica Sizer as our town administrator, moving up from the interim town administrator position.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion in a second to accept the wage authorization for Jessica. Hearing no more conversation, call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, aye.
Dylan Clark, yes.
Greggo Sullivan, yes. All right. Letter of understanding and wage authorizations for Mr. Haggerty for the new treasurer collector.
Have you read the memoranding, memorandum of understanding that Jessica had sent out?
I did.
Okay.
Looks pretty straightforward. Dylan, did you? Would you have concern?
I just briefed over it before the meeting. I didn't see anything out of sorts.
And of course, attached to it, one item is also the wage authorization. Guys, both come to a forward that, I will look to a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the wage authorization for Alexander Haggerty as well as approve the memorandum of understanding between the town of Berry and Mr. Alex Haggerty as our treasurer collector.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion in a second to approve the letter of understanding and the wage authorization for Alexander Haggerty. Any further discussion on the matter? To that, I will say, gentlemen, this does call for all of our signatures on the form with, with him, so you have to stop at some point and sign this. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing that, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
I'm going to give my signature out of the way now. I'll leave the date it opened for over signs at last. Okay. Assistant accounting position discussion, who put that on?
I put this on here. I don't know if you saw my email, but we had a resignation of our assistant accountant, Kelly, about, a little over a week ago. And so I thought that this would be a good time. Jean, our accountant, approached me about having Paula do the assistant accountant work who works in our cemetery and assessor's office. And so she's, Paula's been filling in for the past week, well, it's just a, it's a five-hour, a week position to help keep Jean up to speed. But I think that this would be a good opportunity for everybody to discuss whether they would like to just appoint Paula in that position, or if we want to go out and do a search. I think it would be very challenging to find somebody to fill in a five-hour-a-week position. Or we could go so far as, when I think about this, I think about the longevity in the services that we provide as a town, in having somebody who only works for five hours a week, that's kind of a niche, in that we were very lucky to have Kelly there for as long as she was there. But I think for longevity, that could be a lot of turnover if we were to find somebody to replace it, or if Paula decides to retire or find employment elsewhere, then that's three positions that we have to figure out coverage for. And I think that if we're looking towards the future of the services that we provide here, I think that we have a couple of employees who do a lot of different jobs, they do them very well, but my concern is that if they leave, how do we efficiently replace them with, you know, high-quality individuals?
Fair enough. This, this position is actually what, probably, just about three years ago, we came up with, we were having issues with getting the books balanced and everything done in a timely manner. And this is the solution, is to find a correct path, this is to find a few hours a week and crucial time to help Jean get the books ratified. It's something she's done without before and could, don't want it to, but I'm not overly concerned if something leaves and we can't find something to replace. We did open it up as we normally do, to town workers first. Once again, it's a five-hour position, it's not a full-time, so I don't feel we need to do that. Does she have a background in accounting or?
It's my understanding that she does not have a background in finance, and that Jean in, yeah, Jean indicated to me that she would be responsible for training Paula to use the software and, you know, learn how to do the processes correctly.
This is her preference?
Yes.
So Paula's kind of the secretary for the cemetery commission, as well as what role for the assessor's office?
She's the assessor's clerk.
Assessor's clerk. Do you know how many hours combined that puts her into?
It's under full-time, but if she, if we added this five-hour position, it would put her over full-time. So it's within that range.
Okay.
So realistically, we're going to have to offer benefits if we do this, which is a big difference, a very substantial difference to do that. However, gentlemen, I would say if we did that, that nips Jessica's concern in the butt because now, now we're, there's reason to stay if you have benefits. But that certainly raises a number that we're going to be putting to that, is five hours a week plus whatever we're contributing towards insurance- five hours a week plus whatever we're contributing towards insurance and things. But that's the balancing act. Now, that might solidify the position and so would if we doubled the money to somebody as well.
Would that put Paula in a position where she's submitting documents to herself to have invoices paid off? In other words, she's signing off for the assessor's office or she's signing off for the cemetery commission, making requests for invoices to be paid? And then she'll be receiving those and putting them into an invoice warrant? That we were, in other words, is she kind of becoming her own double-checker?
I don't think so. I think if this was a collector's office, the treasurer collector, I'd be more concerned. And we had this last time, we had somebody from the collector's side wanting to go to accounting and that was double-checked.
The treasurer collector deals with collections but not payments initially. They, in other words, they process the check based on the approval of an invoice by the accountant's office and actually the board of selectmen. And but my understanding is all of the invoices go from departments to the accountant. The accountant builds out the warrant, sets it in front of us, says, okay, I've verified there's funds in every account, so I do believe these are how they should be paid. And then, once we sign off, it goes to the treasurer to actually cut the check. So if Paula's in the assessor's office saying, I think we should pay this invoice, and then she goes up to the accountant's office and receives the invoice and puts it into a warrant, I'm not doubting her. I'm just saying we are setting it up, though, where somebody could wonder or question whether she's fast-tracking invoices because she was the first one to look at it and she's also the last one to look at it before it ends up in front of us. Not to say that Jean would be double-checked. This is nothing to do with what would happen versus does it create an appearance that we don't want to have to defend later? And thirdly, because we are now, I don't know how many, our town population isn't like 5,005 now, right? We're like up into 5,100 or some, we're getting a little higher. I think we got to be careful with how many roles an individual can have without one of those roles being classified as a special employee. And so I don't want to give her a third job, put her into full-time and then realize down the line, she technically should have forfeited one of the three incomes. So I don't want to put her in that position because we made a paperwork mistake. I know smaller municipalities can kind of have someone do multiple roles because they recognize it, but I think once your population gets high enough, they want defined job descriptions and someone working in assessing cemetery and accountant's office may raise an issue if we don't just do our due diligence to make sure not.
I would suggest it would have to be entitled something like Berry Assistant. Just an assistant position that floats, is shared between three offices. So it's one position shared by three offices. But that's, yeah, that's definitely a question for labor council. And that's if we want to do that, guys, because if we do it, then we have to talk about, you know, we're open up to benefits and vacation and everything else that she's not receiving now, which is very substantial. You know, if the standard package was ten days vacation, now that she's working full-time total for the town. But not to say that someone who's working close to full-time shouldn't already be getting vacation. If she's been here a few years and not getting any of the benefits and doing the job, maybe it is time that she's rewarded and given those. Allowed the vacation, allowed that, let her step up to the full-time. That's more where I lean towards it, but I want to call out the fact that we'll give her benefits, but I think that should be intentional. For someone who we've kept just under the mark for so many years and has done her time, she should have some paid vacation, she should have some sick time and, you know, and have a health plan.
So there are just a couple of questions I think we need to have answered. I'm not opposed to it, but I would suggest we also put out an internal posting, post a job, at least to internal employees. Give it 10 business days and at that point, we can make an appointment, whether it's we get our questions answered on Paula or we get an alternate internal person that says, I'm also interested in that. And we can then decide, once we, probably in the next two weeks, we can get all these questions answered and kind of just settle down and say, this seems to be the right direction for the board to go.
I think it's a smart way to proceed. Like I said, I lean towards letting somebody, and that's part of the internal posting, what we always have done before, you give somebody that's here in town working a chance to step up in advance. And this would be exactly the case for Paula. But we certainly want to give other people the opportunity to apply as well. And that decision's going to be ultimately the board's, but because it's going to come into labor council. But normally, we leave this to the department head and the administrator. We have in the past and I would want to leave it up to you two to look at the applications. But the final approval still would be by the board if we have any concerns. But I would think unless Matt and Dylan might disagree, that we will let you and Jean pull the applicants to make a decision, but you need to be able to, you know, demonstrate why that was your choice, not just because they like her.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sound fair, Matt? Assuming that Paula can have it, the labor council tells us it's doable that way.
Right.
How to define her job as a multi-task individual, a shared employee. So she's not employed by three departments, she's employed by our office in shared instances of the three. We split out the paychecks that way. I know.
Board of Health and.
Board of Health, is that in there?
Mary Ann.
We've got many people like that, yeah. Mary Ann's one. Andrea's one. Janine.
Janine's one, yeah.
Yep.
So you do it, we just have to make sure we word it right. If that's where we go, let's get it posted. And Matt, you're comfortable with letting that make the decision? We just do a final approval?
Well, yeah, we'll approve it probably, I'm guessing, you know, through the same wage authorization and appointment paperwork that normally comes through.
Well, we may have, we may have to have Jessica look at a new scale of authorization for it because we're going to possibly be making a new hybrid position.
Well, then that would be 100%. You'd have to include the board of selectmen completely in that process.
At least.
Because we're defining a new position in the classification plan you're suggesting?
Well, at the very least, we're going to look at what she's paid in these different jobs. If they're all the same, it's pretty easy. We just up the hours and keep the wages the same. But if there's different wage amounts, we need to kind of find a neutral point. Bearing in mind, there's going to now be other compensations off to her. Well, once again, we let the department head and the administrator make that decision and bring to us what they propose and that's when we'll discuss it and make our decision. Which I can't imagine that they're not going to give this done to our satisfaction. But, you know, we always like to walk and have our opinions. We love our opinions, don't we?
Yeah, so like Greg said, we'll probably just need to know what her two existing hourly rates are. I don't know if they're the same rate or if they are different rates and then see if this third position would also create a third number and would have to figure out how to work that out legally. I don't know what the rules are on that.
Then once she becomes full-time, we've got to put her into classification specifically so she can fit the pay scales. And when we drop her in, we're going to have to look at the years of service she's done in this town already. If she's done 25 hours a year or 20 hours a year, that's, you know, every two years counts as a year of full-time. You've got to credit that in the scale properly where she drops it. It's going to take a little doing. Not too difficult, but what classification she'll fit in and what scale she'll start at, what year it's done.
But you don't, I hear you there, but like if I got a new job at the city of Worcester, they don't look at the last year as they just say, this is your first year in this classification row. So you're step one in this job you took. You're not, they don't look at, you've been working for the city of Worcester for 20 years. So if I move you up in a position, you're further along the classification plan. It's, that's your year one of that classification. Now, I would be making that move because I expect it to still pay me more. I'm just saying that, that's, you know, in other words, it's not a lateral move I'm suggesting. So, but I would take into consideration what you're saying, Greg, because it really depends on some of the details.
All right. We'll see what they work out with and we'll discuss it hopefully in two weeks or three, four weeks because I'm going to be at the October meeting. You got to post it in two weeks, it'll take some time to get it done. So we'll put that up for October meeting. All right, anything else on this, guys? Move on.
Sounds good.
Move on.
COVID update. Let's finish this off here.
So for COVID update, we don't really have a whole lot new going on town. I did read last week that we had one new positive case. I will be looking for an update tomorrow at our emergency management meeting on what the details are of that, whether, because I, when we have talked in the past, there's been discussion about somebody testing positive and their residency being in question. So they might say for a day, oh, this person in Berry is positive, but then the next day, they confirm that their residency is Hubbardston or Rutland or somewhere else. So I look forward to getting the details on that, but that would be our first new case in approximately three months. And other than that, I just wanted to let you all know that the Council on Aging has started a plan to open up programming back to seniors. They have a very well-thought-out plan that was approved by the board of health that starts very, very small and conservative with a coffee hour and will grow as time permits to allow more programming. The seniors have been very vocal about getting back into. With others. So I look forward to monitoring the success of all of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that computer noise.
No worries. Remember, I had my granddaughter a few weeks ago putting her head in the screen and whatever else she was doing. Whatever happens.
Could be much worse.
See, when it happens, sometimes I just don't even know where to find the thing to turn off. It's like.
What, where'd it go?
Meeting minutes for August 31st and August 17th. We don't have the 13th here. If you guys see these and looked at them, you want to put them off, you want to make a motion.
I have no questions or comments.
Yeah, I have not gotten a chance to go through these with a fine-tooth comb by any means. So I don't have a strong opinion whether we make a movement, make a motion tonight or at a later time.
Well, do you want us to hold off so you can look through them? I'm comfortable with them, Matt. Are you?
I'm comfortable either, either direction. If he's looking.
Wait, we'll hold it off for you if you're all right with it. We'll forward these to.
I think I'm comfortable with these. I'd make a, I'd make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes of August 13th, August 17th, and August 31st, 2020.
You don't have the 13th, oh, do you have the 13th online just not here?
No, the 13th, I just, I didn't get to look it over, so I didn't put it in the pocket.
We don't have the 13th.
My mistake, my mistake. So I'll make the same motion. I'll subtract the 13th. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 17th and August 31st, 2020.
Very good.
I second that motion.
A motion to second to approve the minutes for August 17th and 31st. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Dylan Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes.
Greggo Sullivan, yes. Correspondents. Has everyone seen this letter? I haven't got a chance to read it yet. From.
Oh, Flaherty Road?
I have read it, yes.
Somebody want to go through it then to say what it's about? Go through and read the whole thing here?
I've got to drive up and verify what I'm reading, so I better understand it. But I'll summarize it rather than reading it verbatim.
Yeah, that's all.
The concept is apparently somebody put up a gate that prevents access to town property. It may have been a, they located the gate misunderstanding their property line or they intentionally are blocking people from accessing because they are trying to limit other people. So that's the best answer I got. I don't know if that.
Has anyone talked, brought this to DPW's attention? Because Jason should have a town, state road book, list all of our roads, sizes, where it's paved, parts and everything.
So I've discussed the issue with Chief Carbone and the assessor's office to figure out, because this letter does mention that they have spoken with the police department about, they had a little bit of an altercation with the private property owner. So they did have police there to kind of observe what was going on. Chief Carbone isn't aware of any illegal gate from when they were down there. That doesn't mean that it hasn't been put up since. So my next step was to go to the assessor's office and look into seeing where, because I think the dispute is really where public property ends and where private property begins and also public access to a roadway. So I don't know if the private property owner thinks that the, from my understanding, is that the roadway is not paved, it's just like a dirt road. So I don't know if the private property owner misunderstands where his driveway begins, where the public road ends. So I'm working with the assessor's office on figuring out where all of those lines are. And then I can definitely for sure loop in Mr. Pimental from the DPW to discuss public access to that road too, because that will present issues when it comes to plowing. And my concern is public safety access in the event that there's an emergency down that area, but.
Is this the same? I believe this is where we just talked about them making a parking area to access the reservoir down there. Ottawa or somebody wanted to approve that to do a parking. Is that restricting access to that?
My understanding is that the parking area is before that gate, where the gate is.
What were you saying, Matt?
I was just referring to the organization. It's the East Quavon Land Trust.
Yes. So Jessica says that parking area is before that.
I think just past the gate, actually, though, is the access to the town-owned land. And that's where part of this letter comes up from Bob Kane, but I'm not 100% sure. If I read the letter right, I think he did mention that he thought that the gate prevented access.
Seventy acres of town land or 100 acres of town land.
Seventy acres with no parent public access for sporting.
All right. So either way, we need to make sure we have access to the land. It's back there, the whole reservoir, it's a discontinued reservoir. They've blown up the dams, a big body of water. There is, you know, the ability to go fishing there. I know there's deer back there for hunting and I would imagine other birds in there as well, whether it's waterfowl, fennel, partridge. But I'm sure there's ample reason for people to want to be on the town land. So I think either way, we need to, first of all, find that if we should have access to that road. And if we don't, we need to come up with an access. You know, be an eminent domain for part of the road. Whatever we need to do, we need to make sure we have access to the land back there.
Yep. I know I've been approached prior by people. Yep. I know I've been approached prior by people from uh, connected to the East Quavon Land Trust, asking if we wanted to donate that land to mass wildlife, because apparently our land separates East Quavon Land Trust and some mass wildlife land over there. My perspective, based on how the state's been managing our, um, Ware River, I'm not inclined to suggest that we give any land to the state. We can kind of keep our own thoughts and try to maintain our own conservation measures consistent with what the state does. But I don't want to give them something that then they can come in and just shut it down and take away access because they feel like somebody's leaving too much trash that they don't want to clean up. So that's just my opinion and that's all it is. So I, that's where I'm at. I don't appreciate the way DCR has been addressing access to the Ware River.
Yeah, last idea we left off that we had our meeting stopped because of COVID about blocking the road and the access down there off of 122. Someone said to me the other day that they heard they're gonna go ahead and do it and put up guardrail and block it. We'd have a great exception there because you have the cemetery up there and access to all those old historic sites up there, up on that end of, um, there's a grain driven that end, I believe going through. But I haven't heard anything back. Have you?
Nope. I don't believe that either party, we should probably see if we can reach out to our Ware River Watershed Advisory Committee members.
And the Rutland Select were involved in getting everyone together, weren't they? One of the selectmen of Rutland?
They were, yes. We used Rutland Select to meet him.
Say that again, Dylan.
The fellow's name, uh, Mr. Jeffrey Stillings.
Maybe Jessica, in general, Rutland Administrator would see if they have an update on that as well. I'd like, I don't want to let this drop and they could just be after the uproar, just trying to let it die down and do something quietly. So I think we need to kind of poke that bee hive a little bit and see what's going on in there before this goes the wayside. When we get through the summer, it wouldn't surprise me if they quietly over the winter, there's no one around, try to commit and do something. Let's just follow up with that. Anything else you guys want to bring up? Selecting reports? Issues, concerns, new stuff? You missed it. A great meeting, by the way. Nice and cool in here. You can smell the fresh air from the fan. It's like the outdoors.
Well, I appreciate it, but yeah, it just didn't work out. And I understand just there's no, no concern from my end on the equipment being available. That's just the way things go, so. Today was just better for me to stay where I'm at with what I do in Worcester. I've just got to be careful at how many different places I go where I start kind of a walking across the gray line of social distancing. And I'm not quite saying what we would have done there is that, but when I do that, something like that there and then at two different construction sites during the day and somewhere else, all of a sudden I'm becoming someone that no longer has any type of bubble. And I don't want to be the one that actually gets you guys infected either. So I've got to be careful where I just kind of run into a room and be concerned with the number of employees I work with here as well as in my, in Worcester.
Fair enough. I would touch on one topic. I had a discussion with Ellen. She's concerned about, A, she needs a camera outside viewing, um, the ballot box that we, we got her out there. And we were working on that with Jessica and talked to Andrew. I guess the cameras should be accessible. We may need just the software. I don't know if you talked to them, but it should be doable.
So the issue with the existing cameras that we have is that they monitor, but they don't record. So in the event that something happened overnight or something happened when we're just not looking at the cameras, um, we would have no way to go back and see what happened there. Um, so that's, Sandy and I, we're talking pretty extensively about it today, at looking into getting some more secure. Um, because then we also have to worry about, um, another concern I was talking about Chief Carbone with as we're talking about getting a camera system for the police department is that we can't purchase cameras that are made foreign because there's a threat of foreign interference in our surveillance. Which has been proven in other government buildings to have happened. So we really just have to make sure that we're getting, uh, you know, a good quality, American made, uh, which is always a positive, uh, equipment that can record. Then we'll have to look at storing recordings and, um, and how to access those recordings after they come to us.
Typically the, the recorders, they're all digital. They can record a terabyte or more. We should be able to get, if we had, say, four cameras on it. I would think we could have a month of rolling recordings. We keep the quality reasonable, or two weeks at a higher quality, I would expect. You shouldn't be any need to store them unless there's some law department says we have to. When I use install, I advise people, you know, if you have an event, you know, we're going to realize within a days that something's happened that you need to go back and pull a recording and you have the option to, uh, record it on a zip drive, a flash drive, whatever you want, a thumb drive and, um, preserve that portion and then it'll be over with at the time. Unless there's a reason for us to store this data, I wouldn't. For election purposes, you know, she might have to. But she also needed the camera inside to watch the, um, election area where they come to cast their votes, but not, not in a manner that can see what people are actually doing the cast of it, but to watch the table and the booth and the handling of the documents. She needed a camera for that, so. I don't know if we want to. And I would assume this could go into the COVID Cares Act expense because, you know, this is coming up because of the, you know, mail-in ballots outside and the more remote vote, the more early voting we're keeping up inside for COVID. We may be able to put the camera system off for COVID. I would certainly think, even if I did high pricing the camera systems, I was typically a thousand dollars a camera, everything included, you know, monitor camera installation. So if we put in four cameras, I would think it would be about around $4,000. So it certainly is under the expense portion that we need to get it out. The question is, do you want to move forward and authorize something? And apply for it in the Cares Act, um, because we're watching that COVID blocks outside the ballot box.
Working with the city of Worcester, um, I know they use a Genetek software system that allows you to access all the cameras from a server and then you can display them, kind of look at history, et cetera. You want, they've been keeping, I think, up to 60 days of data because it, once you do record it, it does become a public record that can be requested. So you've got to maintain your, I think it's at least 30 days, but 60 days might be the day that Worcester arbitrarily chose just to make sure. If a request comes in, it doesn't slip through and then all of a sudden at day 35 or 40, we failed to meet a public records request just due to paperwork in the office getting stuck on a desk. But there's also, I'm trying to think it's, there is a state contract out there that it might be Siemens that can provide all, all of the cameras, mount them, set them up and provide the support for the software. But it's not, I'm not, it's not going to fall in the same line as the pricing that Greg referenced. It's going to be more. But you're definitely going to get a service where you pretty much can call up the phone and say, I need you to make this work. What's going, what's wrong?
I think the other advantage of service like that is they will usually store the data for you. So if you're talking about 60 days, 30 days backup, they'll, they'll do that. It's like have a cloud that's like for you. That's what I'm talking about. It's a system you don't have it.
No, I'm talking to, it, it's, you put it on our own server rack. So whatever we, wherever we have that, I think it's a town hall. Um, we may even have a, we share the IT backup with Rutland, but that's something else. To get the setup set up, you kind of put it on your own system and then they will set it up and make sure it works for you. And then depending on how you set things up, they'll also, uh, allow you remote access. So you can, well, you can allow them remote access to our town network. So they can do upgrades and fix things remotely if, if you need the support.
I think it's probably more than we need for this, though.
It could be, but if you start setting up camera systems in multiple buildings, you may find the benefit because the city of Worcester is similar where all of these cameras are also accessible by the police department. So every building that has an exterior mounted camera, the police can go there and say, all right, yeah, this person drove from the senior center up past such and such, and then they went up Stetson and they went by the police department and then they went down to DPW and I mean, so it is something that as you grow into it, it becomes more of a useful aid for certain either the police department or other reasons. So I'm just saying it's a room to grow in, but I agree, Greg, it might be a little bit more than we need at this time.
Well, the, the last one I was involved with, we did a 16 zone DVR. There's a software, they just download the software. Software is free when you buy the equipment. So they don't have to keep paying the software fees every year. In the police department, as well as anyone, you could set it up so the police department can put that feed up and put those cameras on the screen. They could have all 16. Then if you had three more DVRs, they can add them to the same screen. They can put up to 64 on a screen at a time. So they can put four 16 zone DVRs up. They can scroll camera to camera, scroll forward at times, 16 at a time, leave it on one. So the options is still there, the pricing that I'm talking about, but you.
Yeah.
Instead of talk to a couple of different companies and see which ones they want to use. There's so many different DVRs and systems out there. But it's a DVR itself, the digital video recorder that gives you the ability to store the data and access the data. Whether you do it wireless or hardwired, whether you do a, um, a regular video feed or even with digital feed, it's just different recorders for those different types and it changes the pricing a little bit. But I would really think we've got a couple of local cameras, smaller companies not. Something as big as Worcester's looking for, we can get something, we'll do still what you're, what you're talking about. You know, we can record it, we can save it as long as we need to, or we can back it up at least so often. Um, the police could access it online. Once we tap it into the internet, you know, you allow, um, different priority levels to, to users on it. So people can go on and view the cameras, people can go on and view the, the history. And then a, a third level is administrator that can, you know, delete and copy and do things with it. So there's three given access levels typically. Um, and the ability to put it remote, um, uh, once we have it on the internet. We don't have to share with anybody. We don't give an access code to it. So it could just be the administrative, the police chief that can hear the cameras.
Okay.
Believe me, the ability is there without the larger companies, but typically when you get what you're talking about, they're going to make a sequence for you. They're going to hook the software up, they're going to run it. They'll put it on our server, which is different than having a separate DVR that multiplies the storage ability by having it on your own server. And that's the benefits of doing that is instead of being restricted to a terabyte, you might get, you know, a hundred times that availability. I, I don't know how big a storage we have on our server, but that's, that'd be the biggest difference. But I don't think we need that. I think we can, you know, watch what percentage of DVR is filling up over the first week or two, and then we just need to get a remote storage device to put it on. So we have enough to store 30 days, then we go back to overriding the first one of those storages. I think we'll keep 30 days at a time on the DVR. You just play with your own recording quality till you get the duration you need. Or you have a separate drive. You can buy a terabyte drive for a hundred bucks and dump the whole thing on your drive and store it instead of rewire it. Go and take that every other month. I think we authorize Jessica to look around at some numbers. We should try to move on this so that we can comply with the election rules coming up. Really for November election, we've got to have these things recorded.
I make a motion that we, uh, request Jessica to continue and move forward to accomplish what's necessary to meet the regulations.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to second to let Jessica pursue the, um, camera systems. All those in favor?
Dylan Clark, yes.
Matt Urban, yes.
Little Solomon, yes. The other thing Ellen asked about was lighting. In the downstairs hallway here, I already talked to Jessica about that. It should be a a matter of calling the local electrician, whatever you use, taking the full foot light, making it an eight foot. There's just not enough lighting, um, where they come up to cast their votes in the early voting. Especially some of the seniors can't see well in that hallway. There's just not enough lighting.
Where are you speaking of? The hallway from the elevator to the clerk's office or are you talking?
Upstairs, the first floor. A regular, a minimum floor level. You go up to that hallway, it's, it's dim. It's not dark, but it's certainly dim. People who have more challenged vision are difficult to see. So I thought the simplest solution, and I said, we can check the building and electrical first, would be to take down that four foot fluorescent box up there and put on an eight. And I'm sure it's, I'm hoping it's LED at this point. But take down the four and put up an eight. With an eight, they can do an eight double, but we can get more lighting up there without rewiring and doing anything crazy. So I don't know if she's got anywhere looking into that, but that's the only thing Ellen asked about.
Uh, I think Sandy might have an update on that. I know that she, she talked to someone.
Sandy?
Yeah, I, I called Greg Goldsmith and he knew exactly what I was talking about because he had recommended it last year. Increasing the lighting size. So he's going to get right on it.
Excellent. Very good. That's all I have. Gentlemen, anything else? You guys?
Nothing to add this evening.
No, I'm good.
Andy, anything you want to throw in before we go?
Nope, I'm all set.
Jessica, last chance.
Yep. So, um, in addition to what we've covered tonight, I just want to mention that the Age and Dementia Friendly Committee is asking people to take their survey to assess the needs of the community's population and improve programs and services for those residents over the age of 55 years old. You can find that survey on the town's website, um, and it will be posted to Facebook shortly. Just help them gather that data. Also, the, there's an ADA grant through the Massachusetts Office of Disability, available for, to us, um, to complete an ADA plan. It's my understanding that I was applied for last year and we are highly encouraged to reapply for it this year. So I will be doing that, um, this week.
Excellent. There's nothing else? I'd look for the appropriate motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I will second the motion to adjourn.
Motion to second to adjourn. Um, last bit of discussion before that, our next meeting?
September.
September 21st. Shoot for the boardroom once again. Hope for you guys can make it. If not, we'll do this again. It wasn't too bad. Um, I enjoyed having all the documents in front of me for a change. And, um, that being said, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, aye.
Dylan Clark, aye.
Little Solomon, yes. Motion.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, everybody. Good night.
Good night.